Let's see, who else? Mayor Field.
I'm here.
Did I miss anybody from the voting board? Okay, Jeff, you got all that?
Yep. Megan, you good?
Yeah, I should be.
Okay, perfect. Okay, first and foremost, we got the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Everybody should have received a copy of that from the email.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from the November 18th, November 18th meeting.
Okay, got a first from Sherene.
I'll second the motion.
A second from Holly. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect. That carries. Okay, quick update on kind of where we are as most everybody is, I think, aware of the interesting path that we've been on with COG. Traditionally, COG goes through our fall funding and it gets approved through the COG and then it goes to the county council traditionally to be approved before the end of the year. The, there was some discrepancies on the county side they felt on the Providence project that was brought up and they felt that there needed to be some things looked at. Since then, Mayor Drew has withdrawn the Providence project and that now has pulled those funds back into the COG. Mayor Drew, do you have any comment that you would like to have on that specifically?
Absolutely. Let me give you a less than one minute update on where we are with, with our project on 100 South. First of all, it was not a right-of-way acquisition. We already, city already had the right-of-way. Since then, we have had the property appraised for all the individual property owners. We have compensated all the property owners. They have cashed all of their checks and we have reached an agreement for the additional 16 feet of right-of-way to be acquired at the same rates per square foot as what we have already paid them. There is no legal or court action of any form whatsoever. The deal is done. The property owners have been paid. There is no objection to the road being open.
Perfect. Thanks, thanks for that update. Any other mayors have questions?
Let me just add one other thing and that, now that that's done, we, what we paid, what Providence City has paid will be used as local match and we will be making an application for construction funds to complete the road with a 66 with a right-of-way.
Gotcha. So you're planning on moving forward without COG funding for the same project?
No, we plan on moving forward with, and requesting, submitting an application for COG grant funds for the construction of the roadway.
Perfect. Are there any other questions from mayors? Okay. Perfect. Thanks for that clarification. So, one of the, one of the things that was discussed at length on the county level was how much participation happens at the local level as it comes in. And so there was, there was some really good debate and conversation about what should be required, how it should be required when it comes to the COG funding and where public participation should happen. One of the things that the COG has been supportive of from the get-go is the fact that, that at the local level where the cities are, that's really where the public should have access and should have the conversation. So that by the time it comes up to the COG, we should have plenty of opportunity for the public to have open meetings. And in Providence scenario, they had, they had public meetings leading up to this one. One of the conversations was that it wasn't clarified per se. There was questions on what the public meeting was. And then when we went back and looked at some of the other cities, it was the same argument can be made. There wasn't necessarily a specific meeting that said, this is COG funding. This is what we're applying for. This is where we're applying. This is what we plan to accomplish. We have a public meeting to have that. One of the things that was agreed upon on the county to bring back to the COG for possible approval, and I'm in agreement with, is this addition to our, our bylaws, which is basically that each city that applies for COG funding is required to have a public meeting specific to the COG project. So it needs to be listed as COG funding on the project and then on opportunity for presidents to come in and speak. And then when the application is submitted, those minutes would then be submitted with the application so that we all have just a view of that public hearing and we can see everything that's going on, just to give a better bird's eye view. Jeff, can you give some clarification on that? And then Craig from the county, if you have some additional, we can have that also.
Mayor Young, I think you summarized it well. The idea of this is just to have a public hearing fairly early on in the process before an application is developed. Some of the concerns by the county count.
Jeff, we've lost your audio. Can anyone else hear him?
No, I can't hear him.
No.
It's a really good sermon.
All right. Do you want me to give my input real quick?
Yeah, go ahead and then I'll, I'm gonna text him right now.
Okay, I think this would be a good, a good addition so that we don't end up like we did this last time with some uncertainties that the council was, was hit with and, and maybe some conflicting information. If we, if we just add this, then the citizens, I'm not gonna say that they weren't involved with Providence project this time, but in the future going forward, I think it'll clarify some things. So.
So, I have a question. Because I don't know what the experience of everyone else is, but in our city, anytime we have any project or development, we never have any citizens come to our account. Well, no, I can't say never. We rarely have any citizens come to our city council meetings and say, this is a fantastic idea. I'm so glad you're finally putting this in and we think it's great. Go ahead. Mostly, everybody says, no, we don't want this. They never want any development. They never want any road. And so, how much weight is the council going to put on those, those public comments? And so if the, if they get a big public outcry that says, no, we don't want this big road in our city, are they going to say, obviously, the citizens of Hyde Park don't want this road, so we're not gonna award that money?
Well, Sherene, I would, I would say that, as Sean does, I, I frankly don't see a role for the county in this. I can appreciate where they're coming from, but this is something that should be happening. You know, all government should, should be as local as possible. And does the county really wanna be in the position of approving or disapproving? Whether, you know, as, as your bud said, or indicated, does the county really wanna be in the position of having to make that decision about whether the city has done enough or not? I think what happened in Providence's case is there was a group that was trying to fill a project and so they just kept peeling up and up and up until, until.
Carolyn Britton's birthday.
Yeah, cuz I mean, I've, I've still got a council member that is claiming that we, that we have no idea how we're paying for our COG grant and telling people that when that's never been the case. So we even have council members that were, you know, not on board.
I don't think that the county council is looking for a, a complete, a complete approval of all the citizens. I think that they just want to make sure that the citizens have been heard by the cities. And then I don't think that the county council is in a position that they will overrule what the COG recommends. I think that, is that, that we don't get through to the process, through the process to the county council and then they have a group of citizens that come and say, it was never heard in county. At least if there's a record there, we can point to and say, yes, it was heard and it was properly notified, noticed, and the opportunity for input at that time is, is where it should be heard.
And that was my.
This is not a hill that I'm gonna die on, but I will say that, that every one of these projects, because of the dollars that are involved, they all should have gone through the budgeting process and therefore they should all be part of public record and multiple public hearings just because we have to budget. And, and so I'm, I'm not sure, I, I honestly, I think what happened is we had some disgruntled citizens that didn't like the, the fact that the road was being planned and they were looking for an avenue to stop it. And I, my concern is that doing this gives people a venue to, to do that. When there's a process in place and there's a budget process that, that allocates the funds that go to the match that pay for the engineering, that, that make these projects possible in the first place.
The alternative side to that though, from the county, what they were trying, at least what was explained to me, is the county was trying to have an avenue where it could, it could get pushed back to the local side to deal with the issues where it's better understood. So that way, if, the idea behind it is, is when you have the public hearing specific to the COG, you then have a mayor and a council that is voting in favor. It doesn't have to be unanimous, as we well know, they just have to be majority in favor of this going forward so that when it hits the county level, if there are residents that are still fighting it, the county at least can go back and say, look, this has all gone through the public process of what's needed to be done. It's clearly been stated and the council and mayor all approve of this one. That's really where this needs to be taken. That's what I felt that was the intent behind this and the multiple meetings that, that we've had.
I understand what you're saying, Jeff. I'm just saying that, that that already happened when it went through the budget process.
Yeah, and I understand that too. And I think the intentions are good, but I also think that what's to prevent future councils from saying, you know, there's a big public outcry against this road and so we don't think that the city should get this money.
Which is really where it should be though, if you think about it. If, if you're doing a COG project for hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions in some cases, it would absolutely need to make sense that the council approves that before the county ever even looks at it. That would seem reasonable in that process.
But that, that's my point, Jeff, is that that has to happen at the budget level. If we all have to submit a budget, capital projects all have to be included in the budget. And if we're, if we're spending, you know, whether it's $10,000 or, or $100,000 on engineering or right-of-way acquisition or whatever, those should all be things that are budgeted. And if cities aren't budgeting for those, then they, they probably, then I totally understand the county saying, hey, you didn't budget for this. You shouldn't be involved in it. But there's a public hearing process involved every time we do a capital project in Nibley and that's, that's through the budget.
Right, but is what makes this unique is the rest of our budgets don't go to the county. This is kind of one of the unique ones where we have a crossover of jurisdiction that we're trying to find a, a balance so that the county doesn't have, you know, too much overreach in what they legally by state law could have. And, and yet the city still have a, a process to work that in. It, it can go either way and it does depend who's in there, but in general, the thought is, is try to keep this more local, not going towards the county. And what the argument was is in a general budget, we might say that we're applying this for this particular road project, but very few budgets specify COG as the funding mechanism or matching that's going in. And so the idea behind this is it just helps clarify where the county is gonna get involved, that this has been very specifically set aside on the city side to address it, was the idea that was presented.
Yes, okay, and I can understand that, but also, so what we're doing is we're, we're approving it in our city. Well, first of all, we're going to the COG, which is the representatives of the county and we're asking for, well, I mean, I guess we're approving it in our city before we ask for the money.
Correct.
And then we're going to the COG and, and asking for the money. And then the COG, which is all the mayors in the county are then vetting all of these projects and saying, these are the good projects that we want. But then it has to go to another level of government.
That is correct. That's how it's set up by the state. And the state has specifically given the county council in our area, that's specifically set up by the state, that they have the full say. Technically, the county can, I mean, they could veto anything we do or do whatever they want, but they, in the conversation, the multiple conversations we had, they were well aware that if they, if they changed too much on the COG process, it devalues the mayor's time in trying to evaluate and the, the C-TAC and all of the stuff that goes into it. So the idea behind this was trying to reach an area where we could maybe still keep that intact without shredding the whole thing. And having us as mayors feel like it's, it's pointless what we do cuz they're just gonna select whatever they want to anyways.
Well, here's, here's the step back because the, the problem with the problem with the Providence project specifically, didn't have anything to do with COG funding. It had zero to do with COG funding and where the money was coming from. It had 100% to do with whether the project should be done at all. And, and that's, that's where, that's where the disconnect is, is for me because the, the project approval and the project planning, that's all local and that's happening at the city level or at the interest city level or at the county level. And the only reason that, that this even came up to the county council, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but, but the only reason this came to the county council at all was because people felt like they could stick a, put a stick in the spokes of the wheel and, and, and can't get the project killed when they were not able to get it killed at a local level. And so it seems like it's doing the opposite of what, what we're saying, or that's the attempt, the specific attempt that drove this potential solution is not what we're addressing.
Sean, if I can add on to what you were saying, you're, you're exactly right. We, we had seven different council meetings where we had the project on the, on the agenda for discussion. In our council, we, we had a regular running dialogue with members of the audience. I went back and copied it and pasted all the minutes from those meetings. We had 11 pages of comments from residents on that, along that project route and other citizens. They also, and, but they managed to convince the county council members that they hadn't been heard. They also convinced the county council members that there was some lawsuit going on. They were gonna tie this up for beyond five years, which was not true at all. But the county council members chose to believe it and more than many times, the county council members brought up lawsuit, lawsuit, lawsuit. And as, as many of you heard and I, I know, have also said, they're concerned that all we have to do is hear a resident complain about, something about a lawsuit and all of a sudden the county council decides to drop your project.
Yeah. So we've got the county council second, second guessing the citizen, the decision made by the people who are closest to the situation and are, have more information.
Now, I don't have a problem if we add something to the application like, like a checkbox that says, has this project been budgeted and, and has it gone through a, you know, a public hearing process? I don't, I don't mind a checkbox like that, but I don't wanna do anything that creates a situation that allows or encourages people to think that they can go to the county council and veto specific projects.
So, Mayor Flint makes a good point and she made it in the executive committee meeting and when we had in Hyde Park. And, and it keeps going through my head. And her comment was how many times has development come to the city and the neighbors not showed it up to complain? So if we're submitting minutes, all 19 cities have a grant application or however many, every one of those grant applications is gonna have minutes with people showing up and protesting it. I mean, all of us are elected officials. We've been doing this for a long time. How many times do people show up and compliment us or tell us how much they like the project? It's fairly rare. So what the county council members are gonna be reading is citizens who are against the project.
So do you feel that this will have the opposite effect, even though the council and Craig from the county, you can correct me if I understood them wrong. Their, their whole point was they wanted a place to go back and specifically said, look, there was a public hearing to address this at the local level. That is where all of this gets taken care of, not here at the county.
That's exactly, that's exactly what, what we were hoping to do with this because we understand and I think the council, I, by we, I mean the council, understands that by the time it gets to us, the mayors have already acted on it and it should be up to the county to approve the project. I don't think the council wants to be the body that, that approves these projects. But we are the ones that levy the tax and that's probably why it has to come back to us because it's the county council that made the decision to levy this tax and put it on the ballot so people could vote on it. And so I think that's probably why it has to come back to the, the county for ratification.
So Craig, would the county council be satisfied with a, with a section in the application that certifies that the applicants have gone through the public hearing process required for budgeting the project that's, that's being contemplated or that's being applied for?
Be okay with me. I think they'd be all right with it as long as it's, it's clear in the budgeting process what the money is being spent for.
Then I'll make that motion that.
Are, are you saying, are we specifying that it needs to have in the, in the public hearing that it specifies COG?
The, the project, the certain, the specific project should be, if it's using budget for, for a match, I think it should be listed in the budget for the, for the municipality.
Then I'll make a motion that, that we revise our application to include a, a certification from the applying, whatever we call them, the applying agency, the applicant, that their project has gone through the legally required public hearing process for the project.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I've got a first from Dustin and a second from Sherene. Oh, any other discussion on that?
Yeah, so are we talking about what Dustin said, just a checkbox?
Yeah. Mayor Dustin did not include minutes attached to that, which was discussed specifically by the council, but that, that has not been brought up here and has been left off on the current motion that's on the table. And also on the current motion, I don't see, at least if I understand it correctly, there is not anything that specifically says COG project in the public hearings. That, am I understanding that correct, Mayor Dustin?
That's correct because the, and that, that's by design. And the reason for that is that the, the funding, you know, when we go through, for example, in Nibley and do our planning, we don't plan for COG funds. We plan to get jobs done that need to get done. And, and if those jobs are funded through COG or if they're funded out of our general fund, the, the funding source is not relevant to, to the value of the project or the amount of conflict or what people are gonna be upset about.
Okay. Thank you. Craig, do you have anything butters from the county? Does that seem reasonable from your understanding?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think we need to be open and clear and it, and it needs to be apparent what the, what the project is. And I don't know why we would wanna hide that it's, the, the city's applying for COG funding for a certain project. It, it almost sounds like we're trying to hide that fact by not putting in, by not requesting or requiring the minutes to be in there. But if it's approved in the budget process, if the, if the council is on board and the, and the citizens have been noticed and had an opportunity to, to comment on the budget, I'm okay with that.
Well, and Craig, if there's a way to say it so that, cuz the intent isn't to hide it. I just, I just know that I wouldn't wanna read, you know, 400 pages of minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. What the county was trying to go for is what happened in Providence was, was Mayor Drew shared multiple council meetings of public hearings. And in those public hearings, there was all kinds of different things discussed from the very people that were arguing it and having problems through, there wasn't a specific meeting that could go and said, this is the COG project. This is what it's about and this is where funding. And that's what, what brought this up.
Why can't we just have a checkbox?
We always considered this a COG funding project from day one.
Okay.
Couldn't we just have a checkbox that says, has a public hearing, properly noticed public hearing been held in a council meeting to discuss the budget for this project? Yes or no?
Could we just, could we just add something in there that says that?
Sorry, who do we?
Could there be something in there that just states, funding sources disclosed, just in a single sentence?
Again, with, with Logan's projects, I know sometimes these are bigger projects and we may have been talking about these for three years. We may have done the engineering one year and the budget and then it, once it gets a little more form, then we say, okay, this looks like a good project to take to COG. So sometimes it's a little hard to identify where that process happened. But again, we could do something specific later too, I guess.
Perfect. So the first one on the table is Mayor Dustin's. Jeff Gilbert, do you have some, some make sure that we can approve? Cover, I think that covered, I, Mayor Dustin, you talked about just a check mark that basically says this has gone through public, public hearings, subject affected representation, which I, I think would work for what Craig was also talking about. If Jeff is on, Jeff, are you on? Gilbert?
I think so, Mel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I think I got an echo there. I'll try to figure it out.
That's okay.
So. Mayor, did you, did you see the language that I proposed? And I wonder if it would be okay or whether we need to modify it. You should see it on the screen now.
Zoom call. Down the road.
No, the, the, Mayor Dustin did not include documentation that had to be included with the, with the application.
Okay, so can we use some of the language versus council minutes for the jurisdiction? So we just need to exclude the minutes of it, but we can still include a, a public hearing that's required either part of budgeting or otherwise?
Well, Mayor Dustin's recommendation was quite different from the paragraph you've written. It wasn't near to the death of this. Mayor Dustin, can you, can you review that again?
Yeah, I, my, and I apologize, I'm having to do this from a handset, so, but my intent was to just say that the legally required public hearing process for the, and notification for this, for the proposed project has been completed by the applicant.
Do you want me to do some digging or something or mulch in or?
No, that, all that, all that whole side just needs to sit for a couple.
How about this over here?
Somebody needs to mute.
So who's on there? I'm trying to figure out who needs to mute.
Somebody needs to mute their phone. We're getting a sidebar discussion.
I think that's Mayor Wood. Mayor Wood, are you on?
I am.
I am.
What, what is your phone number and all?
Seven, seven, zero, eight, zero, nine, seven.
Okay, I'll mute you. I think we're getting some feedback from your line and let me know if you want to talk.
Okay.
Well.
Okay.
And that's why we love these meetings.
The paragraph, what you were talking about, the paragraph is, is missing. I like the idea of just that box saying it's gone through. It, it's gone through the public hearing process as needed and that the, a majority council in agreement, just that check mark. Has, has it gone through that process?
Okay, so basically we would add where we currently have a check mark that says that the council, the majority of the council's agreement, that was added this last application. On request of some other cities, we would just, in that section right there, prior to that, we would add that it's gone through the proper public hearings. To inform residents or something to that effect. Is that amicable, Mayor Dustin?
Yeah, and I think, you know, Craig, I don't want to step on the council's toes and do something that's going to offend them. I'm just trying to figure out how to make this. As, it, it seems that their concern is they don't want to be stuck between a public who, who says that, that the process hasn't happened and an applicant that says that it has. And I, and I, I feel like this, my intent with this is I feel like this really kicks it back to the city council. So that the, the county council can say, hey, the city council told us they did this. And, and so your, your beef, you know, opponent is not with us, it's with the city council.
Yeah, okay, I think it meets the intent of, of the county council.
Perfect. Okay.
Mayor, are you okay giving the executive committee the ability to kind of wordsmith this in terms of putting it to a policy?
Yeah, I don't.
Yes, I am.
And, and we'll make sure we send a copy out to the COG to, so that everybody's aware of what will be sent and the, because that will lead into the discussion at the county level here in the next. Month or so as we go, as we discuss this, because they wanted a specific rule. On that. So I've got a first from Mayor Dustin, a second.
Can I review the language of, can I review the language of the motion before we move on? So this is what I currently have. A motion was made by Mayor Dustin that the application be revised to include a certification from the applying applicant that the project has gone through the legally required public hearing process. Is that how you want it to work?
That's what I'm proposing and then, but then Jeff asked if they could, if they needed to, if they could wordsmith it for the policy and I was fine with that.
Is that good, Megan?
I'm going to take that as a yes. So I've got a first from Mayor.
Sorry, my, my, my went up a second. Are you wanting a sentence in there saying that the executive committee is going to finalize the wording for the bylaws?
I'm fine with that.
Perfect. Okay, so we've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Perfect, that carries. Okay, now on to agenda item number four. And so with the county discussing what they had with Providence and Providence now polling. Traditionally, how this has been done in COG is the funding just rolls down according to the votes that, that we have already done. And in this discussion that we had, the last meeting we had, we discussed the potential of, do we split some of that? Or do we keep it just how it is where it just flows down? And, and at the time, the mayors said that they want to keep it with what we have in there with COG where it flows down. The caveat that was brought up then and will still be brought up now, that cash county project that this would flow into is the Richmond project also. Obviously that becomes problematic on my scenario being a chair because it flows into that. It becomes problematic on the county side because when they push back, it could go directly to the county. That was why this was brought back to the COG was they actually wanted to make sure that they didn't just apply that rule that we normally have, which would just go to the next one. Therefore looking like it was a self-funding mechanism. And I brought that up in the very meeting that that's basically what we, what we have set up there. And I know there's some discussion about how that works on the rural set aside and where that is, but we now, I'll open that up for discussion on the mayors, how we want to proceed with that, whether we want to continue with what happens that with that, or if we want to look at something different.
Mayor, can you see that on the screen? I tried to share that with everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and it, we probably shouldn't know that the county council did approve the top three projects. Those were approved by the council. What they pushed back to the COG was every project lower than that because of the Providence issue.
So Jeff, do you want to go through the funding on project rank at number six? Where those figures are coming from?
Yeah, you bet. So on, on that project right there, that was a joint effort by both Richmond and Cass County. That is the road going out of Richmond. It's one of our main artery roads heading out on the north east side that also does connect into the ski resort. Feeding, feeding the northern corridor. And that comes off of the hill, which has major erosion coming in. We're trying to basically hit a point where, we're going to hit a point where that road is completely going to be ruined and eroded. We're trying to beat that out where we can create the foundation, repay and not lose the whole, the whole road going up to that. That joins the county road and that's the reason it's a joint effort. It comes out of Richmond up the hill and then on top of the hill connects into the county.
So you're requesting seven hundred and eleven thousand and it was only enough to cover six thirty-seven, five oh one?
That is, that is correct. And, and the cities are committed, Richmond and the county are both committed to finish out that project. And so we would, we would contribute to difference on how we need to, to make up for the rest of that project, considering the project in full.
When you say we, you mean Richmond, correct?
Yes, Richmond is committed to that. I've also discussed it with the county and they are committed to also do that. It's allocated by the difference of the roads. So we're basically, we're dividing it up to the difference of what's Richmond and county and paying according to that, to that project.
I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, is this a regionally significant project? Like, is this on the, I'm assuming that it's on the, the, the master plan because it made it to the COG?
Yes, that's correct. So if you go north out of Richmond, just to kind of give you an idea of how this works. Richmond doesn't have hardly any arteries out of the town. There's three roads going out. Ninety-one that we all know as one that heads out and then there's Speed Street and then there's this project, which is thirties heading into the, I believe it's eleven. Or it's a thousand north, which is our five hundred north. Those are the only northern exits out of town. And so it's.
Right, but, but, but is, is it on the county, like, is it on the county general, like, is on the county plan as a significant road? Not a.
Mayor Dustin, this is Jeff Gilbert. I think what you're asking is, in the, in the urban areas, in the CNPO areas. We have a requirement that for the road to apply for funds in addition to the two hundred thousand spot improvement. They have to be part of the CNPO regional transportation plan. However, where, that only applies to cities that are participating in the CNPO. For rural cities outside the MPO boundary, the only requirement is what state code requires. Which is it be a collector class road or above. So, so our plan doesn't go beyond the urban area, Mayor Dustin. And so it wouldn't be on this plan because those cities aren't part of the MPO that approves that plan. Does that answer your question?
That's a confused thing.
It really hinges off the fact that the CNPO only covers a portion of the county. So it's not fair to hold them to a plan that they aren't part of or don't approve. So in the rural areas. So in the rural areas, we just default to what state code requires. In the urban areas, because the COG and the CNPO has decided to channel those funds to the projects that they've already approved and prioritized. Then it has to be part of the plan. I think Mayor Dustin may have dropped off. We'll see if we can get him back.
What's happened to the Benson Ridge rehabilitation? That was the next one that was on my list.
That was actually before this one. It got fully funded. So it was before, in, in rating, it was before this project. And the majority of it was, was pulled out of the, the funding, the full funding, the CNPO. And, and then only a small amount came out of the rural, like eleven thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Dustin, you dropped off. I don't know if you heard my answer about the regionally significant?
I did. It's, yeah, I am. I, sorry. It's, so it sounds like this is really, um. This is really is rural set aside project and I, I don't feel like I really have a dog in that fight. It just, so I, yeah, right.
I think it's a good project because that road going up to the ski resort is dicey.
You're fine as long as the semi is not coming down the road?
Yeah.
Well, just in the last year or two, there's been a, a housing subdivision built right off that side. Some of the homes are, are built right up to that road there too.
But can I ask just a couple of questions about that? One is if we appropriate only a portion of the funds that are necessary for this overall project now. Is, are things such that a part of, of giving just a portion of the funds right now? Does allow the project to begin and start moving forward in some sort of meaningful way? Or would it be worthwhile to look at another project that may not have ranked quite as high, but could be bitten off and completed in the second year? And the second thought is, would it make any sense to just pause on the funds, return them to COG coffers? And then invite Richmond and the county and Providence and anyone else who may have been further. By and just have that much more funding to hand out in the next cycle. Instead of doing the allocation now where we kind of got thrown into a bit of a funk by these circumstances.
It looks like you're, they're only about adding in this three hundred and seventeen thousand eight eighty-three. It looks like they're only about forty thousand short. You're not talking about a huge, huge amount, it looks like. Am I seeing that correctly? Jeff and, Jeff and Jeff?
Yes, you're, you're.
So we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're talking forty thousand. And in which Richmond and Cass County has, has said they would come up with. So, so with the way that, that we have have done this in the past and it just moving on down, I, I don't think it should be reallocated. I, I really think that it ought to just move on to this project. In fact, if there isn't a lot more, I will make a motion if we're to that point.
I agree. Because I think that everybody's, we've reviewed all of these. The engineering has been done. We've gone through the whole process. We just move on down and keep, just do it the way we have in the past.
I'll make a.
I'd like to weigh in and say I agree too.
All right. I'll make a motion to allocate that three hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three project number six.
I'll second it.
Mayor, if you, if you're, if you're looking at the screen, can everyone see the screen? Because that's, that's what pushing the money down looks like. Are you comfortable with making that part of your motion? Yes.
Okay, so I've got a, a first from Mayor Beus, a second from Mayor Flint. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I, I appreciate everyone with that. This has been, this has been a bit awkward on my side, just so everybody's aware. I, I know we have rural funding that we're trying to figure out both with Mendon and Trenton and Amalgas and trying to balance that out. I made it very clear with the county that, that this kind of made an awkward position on my side and trying to represent. One of the things that I was adamant about when representing with the county was that they needed to be very careful to make sure that they didn't, they didn't, in the process of them trying to tweak things, lose the trust of the mayors. And my concern was is if you, if you mess with this very much, it, it kind of devalues what the mayors can input with this. And I was appreciative that they at least picked it back to let the COG work this process. So that we all have input and recognize the value of where it's at. And I hope that the county, as I, when I go back, I'll represent this also. That they will recognize that there is a lot of time and effort that goes into this and there's value in recognizing what the mayors have in input. And I really appreciate everybody having that discussion. And if you have further comments that didn't come in, sometimes digital, it's a little bit tough to have the comments. And please reach out, either the executive board or anyone, so that we can try to, we can try to better this. It's not perfect per se. But at least it allows us to have a process that we can work over time and prevent. And I, I hold the rural set aside as a prime example. That didn't happen at first. That took, over time. The COG recognizing there was value in trying to help smaller towns and making that work. It doesn't mean it's perfect. It just means that each year we try to work through things and make it better. And I hope that that's what we'll continue to do. So thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. Okay, now we're moving on to agenda item number five, the election of the twenty twenty officers. Jeff, do you want to review that real quick on the specifics?
Well, I, I think the bylaws just call for the first meeting of every calendar year. That we call for an election of officers or, and it would just be a, a chair and a vice chair. There's no requirement that the vice chair become the chair. It's just kind of whatever the board chooses. The, the, the commitment there and maybe Mayor Young and Mayor Drew will correct me. But generally it, it's not that intensive a commitment. There is the COG executive committee that meets on certain items and reviews things. But by and large, it's a responsibility that kicks in as part of each COG cycle as we gear up and as we see it through. And I guess that's about all I have on it. Is that good, Mayor?
Yeah, no, that pretty well sums it up. I think the hardest thing that I felt with this was, it was difficult. It's difficult to go through this process and make decisions that are your, your peers and your mayors. And all of us are involved in different circles and it's, it's interesting to me that on some sides we fall in line and it works and other sides is different. But I like the independent nature, but that is a, that is sometimes difficult. But at the end of the day, someone's got to be able to make some of these calls and these decisions. And I was appreciative that it was a process that's just a law and how these decisions were made and how it went down to try to make sure we keep intact the intent of the COG. So thank you. With that, I will open it up for recommendations for our twenty twenty officers.
Jeff, do you have an interest?
Clarification, we have two seats, right? We have the chairman and the vice chair, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Can, can I ask both Jeff and John if the two of you have an interest in continuing the positions you're currently serving in?
How about if we switch places?
So I, I'm okay, I'm okay either way. I've, I've enjoyed where it is. The only part that I'm trying to figure out is I, I do feel that we're a little, we haven't finished our process with this nineteen COG. And that's the only thing that's throwing your kink in this is the multiple meetings that we've all had trying to figure this out and making sure that we continue with a, an ideal process. With that being the case, I'm not against getting back in to try to help and assist where, where needed.
You know, where we're, we're already into the year four months. Maybe we ought to just have these two guys, if you're willing to do it, finish out the rest of this year. And then hopefully meet in January next year and choose new officers. if you're willing to do it, finish out the rest of this year and then hopefully meet in January next year and choose new officers.
I like that idea.
I'll make that in the form of the motion.
I'll second that motion. I've got a first from Craig, a second from Holly. Keeping the officers the same that we have this year, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, um, that, uh, that covers everything. Thanks for working with the digital side. Uh, it's not as personal, but, uh, as we all know, we have to continue to move forward. And now that we're butting up against twenty twenty, we really need to do this so then we can have applications. Jeff, real quick, before we close, can you give us a real quick rundown of the, just the planned agenda coming up for twenty twenty applications? Just so everybody kind of has that in mind.
So we'll, we'll kick that off. I guess it's the decision of when. Uh, generally, we start that in the late spring and summer. But we will, uh, have a first meeting in the cog. We'll, uh, delve into any policy changes that need to be, uh, made in reviews, uh, of the, the procedures and, and policies and, and set the schedule. Uh, there will be also a decision on how much to make available. As you would expect this year, it's a little squishy in the sense that we don't know how the whole economic downturn is going to impact this uh, sales tax revenue. Generally, we anticipate the full year, calendar year of funding and allocate based on that. We've generally just, uh, estimated a conservative estimate of revenue, revenue. This year that's going to be much harder. So we'll have to decide when we have the certainty that we need to decide on amount to put available. Either that or we'll have to decide to just not, uh, state an amount and adjust to it as applications come in, depending on the revenue flow. But those are the things we'll have to work through and then, uh, set an application cycle, uh, for the twenty twenty year. Um, and I think that's about it. Mayor, it would be good, I think we've had some board members join this call. Uh, if, if we could maybe do another check to see who's on the call that, uh, we didn't identify originally. So we can get that in a minute. I'm not sure how best to handle that. But I know Mayor Woods on the phone. Uh, maybe we can just have those that haven't identified themselves, uh, do so now. In term, just the board members.
That's a good idea.
Mr. Rasmussen from River Heights.
Okay, Mayor Rasmussen. Mayor Wood, you're there, right?
I, yes.
Okay, anyone else that we didn't already identify?
Is Mayor Payne on? I think that's the only other one, isn't there?
Uh, yeah, I think there's a few others, but the others I don't think have traditionally participated.
Okay, here's who are currently on the list. I have Ed Use, Stephanie Miller, Sheridan Flint, Jeff Barnes, Sean Dustin, Craig Hidalgo, um, Craig Butters, Jeff Young, Holly Danes, Damon Khan, John Drew, Craig Hidalgo, Kelly Field, David Wood, Todd Rasmussen.
Perfect. Anybody we missed? Okay, thanks, everybody. One of the things that we'll look at from the executive council, we're going to play, we're going to play May by year. Um, if there's a chance that we can meet in person by scheduling it, say, a later May or June type scenario, uh, we're going to go ahead and look at that. So that way, uh, especially as we kick off and do things, um, if that's available, uh, we, we'll try to accommodate the best possible to have it in person. Obviously, if not, we'll continue with what we have and, and move forward with that. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff.
Last year, uh, Jeff Gilbert, uh, held several meetings, uh, to be eligible to turn in a application project. You had to attend one of those meetings. Is that going to take place this year or is that going to be away?
Yes, we would still have that same thing in place, but we, we might adjust that to a digital scenario or something pending where it's at. But yes, we would still have that in place. Mostly that's to try to help, uh, make sure that as much information as possible can get out to everybody so that we try to minimize, um, mistakes on applications or help with that or to make sure that all of the information is there. So when applications are submitted, uh, there's avenues that we can help with that.
What, what is the, uh, deadline for turning in a project?
We haven't set that yet. We'll set that as part of the lead up to the first meeting.
Okay.
Mayor Drew raised his hand. I don't, do you have?
Well.
Did you raise your hand, Mayor Drew?
Yes, two things I wanted to mention. Jeff, we talked about the first meeting of the year. We would go over, uh, projects that had been previously approved in prior years and ask each city, uh, that has any of those outstanding projects to give us an update. Uh, for two reasons, one for the, the cog's information to understand the, the status of each project. The other is to see if there are any excess funds that could be released, uh, for current year projects.
Yeah, we'll put that on the first meeting and agenda.
Okay, but the second question is, uh, I assume this is in June? Or do we know?
That's what we had discussed before, potentially most likely June.
We anticipate using Zoom?
We're hoping by then, uh, we might have an opportunity to meet. It just depends where the state is. But Zoom very well might be pending, uh, whether we're allowed to meet or not.
Okay, just if we're going to use Zoom again, I just have some suggestions or recommendations. Um, that everybody mute their microphone. Um, that whoever's running the meeting, ask everyone who wants to speak to raise their hand. Um, and then turn on the microphone when, uh, uh, when it's their turn to speak. I've heard a lot of background noise, uh, on my end here. I'm sure the rest of you have it as well.
Perfect. I thought you were going to recommend that everybody has a cool background as you do.
Actually, I'm in Honolulu.
Yeah, where we all want to be. No, thank you. And, and one of the things you guys will notice, we left a lot of that discussion off on policies and other things, just the ones we had to cover. Mostly that was because of the status of this meeting and Zoom trying to make sure that we, uh, can focus on what we need and then hopefully we can have a better study or spread it out so that we don't have to dive into so much. So thanks, John, for bringing that up. We'll make sure we accommodate. Also a reminder, anything else that you guys feel we need to address or look at, please reach out to us so that we can, we can make sure we discuss it and have it on there so that we're not, uh, missing out on something or we're leaving something on the table. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to, uh, adjourn.
I'll make the motion. Will you adjourn?
I. Okay, was that?
Hey, this is Mayor Payne. I was on the meeting.
Oh, perfect. Thank, thank you. We got you accounted for. Perfect. Okay, I had a first for Mayor Drew and was it Mayor Miller? Second, anyways, we're good. Call it adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.